...which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Gabriel.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
Pelikas.
Here.
Shumway.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Stoner.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Somerville.
Here.
That's nine present and zero absent, Your Honor. Thank you very much. First, next item is going to be proclamations and presentations, and we have a couple of proclamations tonight. The first one is going to be for Giving Tuesday. Whereas Giving Tuesday was established as a national day of giving on Tuesday following Thanksgiving, and whereas Giving Tuesday is a celebration of philanthropy and volunteerism, where people give whatever they are able to give, and whereas Giving Tuesday is a day where citizens work together to share commitments, rally for favorite causes, build a stronger community, and think about other people, and whereas it is fitting and proper on Giving Tuesday and every day to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service in the city of Laramie. Whereas Giving Tuesday is an opportunity to encourage citizens to serve others throughout this holiday season and during other times of the year. Therefore, I, Andy Somerville, Mayor and President of the governing body of the city of Laramie, do hereby proclaim November 27, 2018, as Giving Tuesday in the city of Laramie, and encourage all citizens to join together to give back to the community in ways that is personally meaningful. So, we've got two organizations that are working here tonight with Giving Tuesday. So, we have Feeding Laramie Valley, who I'd like to invite them up, as well as ARC Regional Services. Guys would like to come up and receive your proclamations. Thank you. Thank you. And then if you guys would each like to say a little bit about your organization and why this is important to you, that would be great.
Awesome. Well, thank you, Andy, and everybody that lent a helping hand in getting this proclamation in order. My name's Nicole Williams, and this is Celeste Hefty. We are from Feeding Laramie Valley. I just want to let you guys know that it's a tremendous honor to be here, and we're humbled to have a community and be a part of a nonprofit that has the support of local leaders such as yourselves. Giving Tuesday is just so important for our community because it's an international event that encourages others to get out there and donate not just money, but time and skills in improving our communities. We at Feeding Laramie Valley are celebrating by hosting our first annual Alternative Gift Bazaar. We've invited a bunch of nonprofits to come, and we're inviting the community to come, and you can donate to them and really celebrate the giving season. I just wanted to say that this is really our way of thanking everybody that donates produce and supports our programs throughout the year. So, again, thank you guys so much for this opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you'll hang out up here for just a second, I think we're going to do a picture.
Good evening, Your Honor and City Council. My name's Ruby, and I'm the Development Manager at ARC Regional Services. Thank you for having us and Feeding Laramie Valley here tonight. I am proud to be a representative of ARC Regional Services, which is a part of this global movement of Giving Tuesday. This year, ARC is actually hosting a drive-through donation down at our location at 1150 North Third Street. So, you can come on down, stay in your car, and receive a free cup of coffee and a free doughnut. Say hi to us. It starts at about 7:00 a.m., so we'll be ready for all of you getting to work. Our goal this year is 2,000 donors giving $2 or more. ARC supports individuals with intellectual disabilities. We foster independence in a community setting. The donations from Giving Tuesday will help provide opportunities for these individuals to live, learn, work, and play. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, on behalf of the city of Laramie, the City Council, I want to thank both of your organizations for participating in this and bringing it forward, and for all of the awesome work that you do in the community. We wouldn't be Laramie without organizations like both of yours. So, thank you very much for everything you do. Request for a picture, so if you guys want to come up here. Thank you very much.
Feeding Laramie didn't grow any romaine lettuce, did they?
It's all gone. It's all gone. They had the only good stuff in town. All right. Our next proclamation is for Small Business Saturday, where we hope everybody spends their money this week, right? So, recognizing November 24, 2018, as Small Business Saturday, and supporting the efforts of Laramie Main Street, the Laramie Chamber Business Alliance, and the Wyoming Small Business Development Center to increase awareness of the value of locally owned small businesses. So, whereas America's progress has been driven by pioneers who think big, take risks, and work hard, and whereas from the storefront shops that anchor Main Street to the high-tech startups that keep America on the cutting edge, small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the cornerstones of our nation's promise. And whereas, small business owners and Main Street businesses have energy and a passion for what they do, and whereas, when we support small businesses, jobs are created and local communities preserve their unique culture. And whereas, because this country's 30 million small businesses create nearly two out of three jobs in our economy, we resolve ourselves to create jobs and spur economic growth in America by supporting our local entrepreneurs. And whereas, Laramie, Wyoming supports this national effort to support America's small businesses to do what they do best, grow their businesses, create jobs, and ensure our communities remain as vibrant tomorrow as they are today. So, whereas, on November 24, 2018, is an appropriate day to recognize Small Business Saturday by the following. I'd like to recognize and encourage the observance of Small Business Saturday. See our signs back here? And support efforts to encourage consumers to shop locally, and to increase awareness of the value of locally owned businesses and the impact of small businesses on Laramie's economy. Now, therefore, I, Andy Somerville, acting as Mayor and President of the Laramie City Council, do hereby proclaim November 24, 2018, as Small Business Saturday in Laramie, and encourage everybody to do so, shop here. So, I'd like to invite Laramie Main Street to come on up and talk a little bit about and...
Bring your signs.
Bring your signs, and anybody else here who is here for Small Business Saturday, please come up.
Come on, Brian, bring your sign.
We can hold up the signs.
I just, I just...
Don't worry, we'll get pictures.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor and Council, for supporting this event for multiple years now. I'm excited to stand here with Hannah from the Chambers. So, this is definitely a collaboration between Laramie Main Street and the Chamber Business Alliance, and the event would not be as successful and magical without that collaboration. So, it's just a really fun opportunity to cheerlead for our local businesses. So, besides saying thanks, we also have for every one of you a shopping guide, so that you can strategically, after your turkey dinner, sit down and make a plan of where you're going to spend your money on Saturday. This year, we have just over 64 businesses participating with us, so that number just keeps growing every year. And we know through surveys and follow-up that this becomes the biggest shopping day of the year, even before Big Fri... or whatever that thing is called that I ignore and sleep in on. I'm in my pajamas on Friday, what about you? So, it is the most successful shopping day of the year for our local businesses downtown. So, thank you for your support.
Well, thank you, and we've scheduled a snowstorm for Black Friday this year, right? That's what I hear. So, they'll only, they'll be able to shop downtown, so I'd like to thank you for that collaboration as well.
So, I'll get you guys your shopping guides, and we can do a cute little photo.
Yes, let's do a picture with your signs.
Thank you.
Trey.
I will be down there all day.
Oh, you forgot to mention, there will be wagon rides from 11 to 3, and...
There you go, yeah.
Oh, that's nice, class.
Thank you.
All right. Do we need somebody to take the picture? Nancy, can you take pictures, please? Thank you. Yes, I'd like to hold this right here.
One, two, three.
Maybe it's just at the right angle, she'd know. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you. These are handy things. Thank you. Oh, Trey, I forgot to give you your proclamation.
Oh, yes, I'll take that.
There's that, too.
Okay, thank you.
These are all the difference.
There you go.
These are all here in Laramie.
Thank you.
All right. And our third proclamation tonight is going to be for DECA Month. This is one that we've done numerous years in a row, and we're really excited to do it again this year. So, whereas November has been designated as DECA Month, and whereas the mission of DECA is to prepare emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management, and whereas DECA enhances the co-curricular education of members through a comprehensive learning program that integrates into classroom instruction, applied learning, connects to businesses, and promotes competition, and whereas DECA's activities assist in the development of academically prepared, community-oriented, professional, responsible, and experienced leaders, and whereas DECA's attributes and values describe the organization's priorities and standards, including competence, innovation, integrity, and teamwork. Whereas DECA is committed to the advocacy of developing and expanding businesses and education partnerships. Now, be it resolved that I, Andy Somerville, acting as the Mayor of the city of Laramie, do hereby proclaim November 2018 as DECA Month in the city of Laramie. And I would like to invite Benjamin and Noah up to talk a little bit about DECA. So, if you'll come up, I'll give you your proclamation first, so I don't forget this time. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. If you guys would like to say a few words.
Sure. Well, thank you for having us here again, and I'd just like to talk a little bit about DECA. And essentially, DECA is a high school and collegiate organization that is essentially centered around developing well-rounded leaders after they come out of high school and college. And so, basically, what we do is we go compete in different marketing areas and finance areas, hospitality, and management, and we go sit in front of a judge, and, you know, we think on the spot and make plans. But DECA is a lot more than just competition, too. We like to be very involved in our community, and we think that community service is an essential part to developing that well-rounded individual. So, we're just really happy to be here tonight, and thank you for having us.
Thank you guys very much, and thank you for the work that you do in the community. It's very important to have young individuals as yourself engaged in the community, and we can see you, and the things that you're doing throughout the community. So, thank you again, we appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
You guys, do you guys want a picture?
Your Honor, what does DECA stand for? What does DECA stand for?
It used to stand for Distributive Education Clubs of America, but then they realized it was a mouthful, and now it's just DECA.
And now it's just DECA. That's fair.
All right, one, two, three.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. If you, if you guys leave, Nancy with your email address, she can send you a picture with some contact information. Thank you all for coming tonight. All right, so our next item on the agenda is going to be a public hearing. City Clerk, can you read the notice? Notice is hereby given that the City Council will hold the following public hearing at 6:30 p.m. on December 20, 2018, in the City Council Chambers, Laramie City Hall, 406 Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming, to take public comments on the following. Original ordinance number 1990, a rezoning request to change a parcel of land approximately 2.99 acres in size from B to general business to C to general commercial, submitted by Bittersweet Group LLC, located at 2015th Street. All applications, plans, and specifications relative to these matters are available for review at the Laramie, city of Laramie, planning office at 405 Grand Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming. Anyone wishing to be heard should be present or may be represented by his or her agent at the meeting.
Can you correct yourself and say November 20 instead of December?
Did I? November 20, excuse me. Thank you for pointing that out. Thank you. Is there anybody here that would like to make comment on this public hearing? Seeing none, I'll close that public hearing. City Clerk, can you read the notice for our second public hearing? Notice is hereby given that the following public hearing will be held at 6:30 p.m. on November 20, 2018, in the City Council Chambers, Laramie City Hall, 406 Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming, to take public comments following original ordinance number 1991, a text amendment amending LMC Chapter 15.24 regarding building code and fire code violations, penalties, and enforcement to establish citation authority, fines, and permit and license criteria submitted by the city of Laramie. All applications, plans, and specifications relative to these matters are available for review at the city of Laramie Planning Office at 405 Grand Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming. And anyone wishing to be heard should be present or may be represented by his or her agent at the meeting. Thank you. Is there anybody here that would like to make comment on this public hearing? Please come forward. Welcome, and if you could introduce yourself for the record, and then when you're done, if you could sign in on the sheet on the media table, that would be great.
Okay, Mayor, Mayor and City Council members, my name is Michael Cisneros. I reside here in Laramie, and I operate the business here in Laramie, Rocky Mountain Contracting. I just want to say I'm in favor of moving forward with these penalties for citations in regards to the particular entities that are not pulling permits and things like that of that nature. I think that along with that, I'd like to further that we are a little bit behind the times here in Laramie, and unfortunately, our residents are the ones who actually are the ones that don't reap the benefits by us being behind without having other types of things in place. I vote that you guys start looking into making sure that your general contractors are licensed. It's a benefit for all the citizens of Laramie. There's a lot of things, I've been doing this for 22 years, and there's a lot of loopholes that happen, and I really wish the city would try to further this, because it's better for the city as a whole. I work with the insurance industry all the time, and a lot of times, they never include, well, I'm going to say 99% of the time, they never include any permit fees with anything, because our city is always known by the insurance industries to never have to enforce these things, so we have to go by each time and prove to the insurance industries that we need to make sure that we're paying for a permit. So, the only way we do that is, you know, we pay for the permit, we get a letter from the city indicating that these are the things that need to be done. And so, you know, I vote that we move forward, get these things resolved, so we can start getting these people that aren't going to be licensed out of the community, and they're not going to, you know, follow the regulations that we have in place. But we've got to set those regulations in order for that to be able to take place. And it's going to be a small step for a big problem that we've got, and I know you guys can't address it all at once, but I say that you guys should move forward and make sure that we pass this. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming tonight. Is there anybody else who would like to make comment on this public hearing right now? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close that public hearing, and we will move on to our next item, which is announcements. Any announcements from city staff? Okay. So, in honor of our 150th anniversary, I have a short, very old ordinance to read. Yeah, it has been, but we've got one tonight, so this one has got to do with water closets within the city of Laramie. Yes, pretty much. Any company or person who shall construct or erect or cause to be constructed or erected or who shall maintain, they really like their words, within the following specified limits, and it lists numerous blocks within the city of Laramie. Any privy or water closet not connected to the city sewer system shall be deemed the author of a nuisance, and upon conviction thereof shall be fined a sum not to exceed $25. So, no constructing of water closets not connected to the city sewer line. And I imagine that was actually a pretty, pretty serious city health risk back then, which was...
Called an outhouse.
Yep. Called an outhouse, that's right. No outhouses in the city of Laramie, apparently, anymore. All right, so we move on to...
What year was that? The give a year? 2018.
City Clerk, do you remember what book this one was from? Was this from the 1890 book?
That one, I think, was out of the 1926 book.
Oh, 1926.
That sounds about right.
Oh, wow. There you go. All right, thank you. Okay, our next item on the agenda is disclosures by City Council members. Do we have any disclosures tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item number six. Vice Mayor.
Okay, I move that the agenda be set as submitted.
Second.
Second by Counsel Shumway. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Vice Mayor.
I move that the consent agenda be approved, and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Second?
Second.
Second by Counsel McKinney. City Clerk, can you do roll call, please? Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Pelikas.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor. Thank you very much. That motion carries. On to item number 10 on the regular agenda, Counsel Henson.
He's not even here yet. I'm sorry. I would like to move to approve Change Order Number Two totaling $195,880.50 to the Professional Services Agreement with Ascent Construction for changes to the scope of work for the North Campus Service Center project, and to amend and transfer funds from water, wastewater, and solid waste funds to the Capital Construction Fund.
Do we have a second? Second. Second by Counsel Stoner. Director Smith.
Your Honor, the Mayor, members of council. As you know, we have a contract with Ascent Construction, Plan One Architects, to design the Public Works Service Center. The original scope of services did not include what we call the mosquito control building, so we had kind of set it aside for budgetary reasons. During the course of the design project, we decided it was in the city's best interest to include certain components within the mosquito control building. So, at that point, we decided to include the HVAC upgrades to the building, electrical system upgrades, fire suppression system, and so forth, so that when the Parks and Rec Department mosquito control chose or was able to occupy the facility, all of those critical infrastructure components would be completed. So, that's a big part of this proposed change order. Another portion of the change order kind of finishes up the project. So, it's been a lengthy project from back in 2014 until now, and we've had our ups and downs with it. I think we're over the hump finally, and this will get us up to bidding the project, so there are some loose ends and things that we need to do, and call pre-bid services that we need to complete. And one last thing, I think that our exercise in trying to meet the requirements of the SRF loan programs added expense to this project, too, so that's another component of that. So, all told, once we get past this, we will complete the design phase of the project and be in a position to bid the project. In two weeks, we will be bringing back before you a Professional Services Agreement with Plan One to serve as owner's representative during bidding and construction, and also a construction manager at risk contract with Ascent Construction, who will, in essence, serve as the general contractor and be responsible for the construction of the project. So, we're getting close to the end. We do need to tie up some of these loose ends and get ourselves in a position to bid the project early next year. So, with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions? Counsel Henson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to make sure I understand, the $195,882, by the way, in the lower part, 50 cents have been rounded up, is not for design alone, is it?
Your Honor, the Mayor and Councilmember Henson, no, it's not for design alone. A big portion of that is design of HVAC systems, electrical, plumbing, and fire suppression systems in the mosquito control building, but it also covers other pre-bid items for the entire project.
But it's not for construction yet?
Not for construction.
Okay.
These are all, all pre-bid or pre-construction items.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Vice Mayor?
So, if I recall, we had a pretty lengthy conversation on things having to do with energy efficiencies out there, and I'm wondering about, and I applaud that, I think that's great, but I'm wondering, considering it's our entryway or gateway into town coming from that direction, have we talked about public art? Is this the time, or do we wait when we go into the, more of the bid process to have that discussion, or when is it appropriate to maybe talk about public art?
Director Smith.
Your Honor, the Mayor and Councilmember Pierce, I'm not sure that tonight's the appropriate time to talk about that, but we have had those discussions.
Have you?
And the project includes some architectural upgrades to the primary building, as well as the others, to identify it as a critical entry point to the community. It also includes upgrades to the landscaping, and I've sat down with Derek Teeny and gone through our UDC requirements, and so we will endeavor to meet those requirements on this project, even though it's not in the city. The project originally included a chain-link fence along 287. Well, that's not permitted by the UDC, so we've removed that fence, and it's our intent at some point to look at that again, potentially in the light of public art or some other enhancement. So, we fully recognize that this is an entry point to the community, and it will be a focal point. So, we want to be proud of the facility once it's constructed, just like all of you, so... And fortunately, our neighbor across the street took care of one of the biggest ice horses coming in, so that in itself looks better, but we fully intend on making this an attractive facility.
Thank you. Other questions? Counsel Henson?
Just one more question. I'm looking at the budget and the proposed cost, and it says on the second item, current budget, $600,000. That is out of the general fund instead of the other ones, water fund, wastewater fund, and solid wastewater fund? Is that correct?
Your Honor, the Mayor and Councilmember Henson, a big portion of that did come out of the general fund.
Yeah.
If you recall several years ago, when we initiated this project, the primary agreement with Ascent Construction and Plan One was for a total of $500,000. So, Change Order Number One raised that to $600,718, and then this one will add on top of that, but the lion's share of that did come out of the general fund.
That, $600,000?
Yes.
That's general fund, I think, yeah.
Other questions? So, I have a couple for you. So, one, going back to the public art conversation, so they're doing the full, with this change order, this locks up them doing the full design, so when you come back to council, essentially, you'll be ready to do construction contracts, right?
Yes, we'll be ready to, owner's representative, and then construction manager at risk, and those are all... at risk, and those are all, uh, for construction services.
Okay. So my question on the, the public art piece is, we have a public art plan that specifically lays out that this is one of the main entry points where we really want to do this. So the way they work the public art requirement in the state is that they put in their design contract requirements of one, that 1% of the cost of the building will be spent on public art, and they put that line in there that requires the architect and the design to actually either hire the artist or work with however the entity wants to, to do that public art piece in design, because it's actually much cheaper to do it built into the design than it is to go after the fact and do it after the fact. So the appropriate place to put that would be in this contract with the design. Do you agree with that? If we're gonna do it, we should do it here?
Yes, but keep in mind, we're about 95% along on the design, so we're almost finished, so, um, I'd hate to delay the project. I, I certainly am willing to add art into the project. We, I'd be glad to talk to the architect and get that rolling, that's, that's not an issue whatsoever.
I, I certainly, from my point of view, I think it's, I think it's very, very important.
I agree. And, and I think our, our best opportunity is there along the US 287 front inch, frankly.
Absolutely.
So we have some landscaping to add and certainly we could do some artwork of some sort, so, um, yeah, I, I don't think that's an issue.
So my, my second question is regarding, uh, the conversations you have with Derek Tini about meeting the UDC. I remember when this came before us, the first time, we talked about a little bit whether this building was going to meet all the city's requirements despite the fact that it's in the county. Are we now going to meet all of the city's requirements when this is built and opens up?
Your Honor, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop short of saying it's gonna meet every last requirement, but, uh, I have a, an extensive list that Derek provided me that, uh, it, what he suggested as improvements or changes to the design that will help us meet the UDC. So landscaping and, uh, parking and so on and so forth, so the chain link fence that I mentioned earlier, so, yeah.
Right.
We're, we're cognizant of, of that for sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council Polikas?
Uh, the question I have is the public art element. Where's the funding going to come from to pay for this, for the public art? Is it going, I guess to, to quantify that, is it gonna come from the general fund? It certainly cannot come from the, uh, enterprise fund, or is it gonna come from the six cent sales tax that's allotted some money for this type of thing, which may not be collected for a couple of years?
That, that's a good question, and I, I honestly don't have an answer for that at this point. My first reaction is it would be shared among the various funds according to the allocation methodology that we've used in the past, but I think as we get into that, it would be an added cost and it's something that we'll have to address, uh, at a later time. I don't, I, I can't quite answer that this evening.
Any other questions for Director Smith right now? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any discussion from council on this item? I'll just add a couple of quick comments. I do think that the public art piece is pretty important because the councils agreed to that public art plan and this is specifically called out as a gateway corridor. I do agree with Council Polikas that the funding needs to be sorted out, but generally, if you do it in design, that's why it's so important, you can use pieces of the, like, landscaping budget and things along those lines to make it all work together, so it costs a lot less money. So I think that's important, and also, I also think it's very important that the building meets all of the City of Laramie's code requirements before anybody walks in that door. I don't think it's fair to impose them on other people and then not meet them ourselves, so I hope that that is the case. Council Hanson?
Your Honor, it, just to refresh my mind, change order number two refers only to the financing change. Is that true, or is that referring to chain link fence or whatever? What does it refer to?
Director Smith?
Your Honor, the mayor and Councilmember Hanson, it, what, what you're acting on tonight is approving the funding to cover the cost of change order number two. The chain link fence has already been removed from the project, that's part of the design process that we go through at the staff level, so what you're approving tonight is simply the funding for change order number two and all of those scopes of service that I described earlier. So the chain link fence is out.
Yeah.
All of the other things that we need to do to meet the UDC will be included in the design.
That kind of stuff, okay. So it does not refer to our, you remember, we discussed before changing our financing options because we refused to take a grant?
No.
That's not what this refers to?
No, sir.
Okay, that's, I just want to make sure that is not the one. Okay.
Thank you. All right, City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Hanson?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
Schumway?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. On to item number 11, Council Stoner.
Thanks, Mayor. I move to approve Original Ordinance Number 1990 on second reading, rezoning one parcel of land from B2 business to C2 general commercial, and noting a public hearing was held on November 20th, 2018.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Schuster?
Yeah.
Mayor Tini?
Mayor and council, good evening. This is Original Ordinance 1990. This is a rezoning, second reading from, uh, for one parcel of land going from B2 business to C2 commercial. Um, a few of you were not here the other night during first reading, so I'll just quickly go over a few items. This area is located at 15th and the future Bill Nye, uh, corner, essentially, that's the, the southwest corner of that future intersection when it, when Bill Nye actually goes in. Uh, the property, uh, can, or the request conforms to the future land use change, which was approved, uh, at your previous meeting two weeks ago. In our discussions during that time and to make sure everyone was aware, we had an error in the cover sheet on first reading. The Planning Commission approved both the zoning amendment and the comprehensive plan amendment with a four yes, two no, one absent vote, um, so we wanted to make sure that that was, uh, clear. The staff did take a look at this, um, in terms of both the comprehensive plan amendment and the zoning request, um, we actually reached out to the University of Wyoming, which owns the property to the south of this property, to see if they wanted to be included within this zone change. We felt that the, a more comprehensive, a little bit larger zone change would even be better in this area. Bureaucracy kept us from, from making that happen, I believe, on timing and making sure that we kept on time with what this group wanted, who was the applicant, and so in the future, we hope that maybe this increases and we see the zoning change spread a little bit into this, uh, in this corner of this future, essentially two future major streets that are gonna intersect, which is 15th and Bill Nye. So, um, staff does recommend, uh, approval of the zoning request, or, we do not have any public comments again this evening, and as it states within the staff report, uh, we did have some inquiries about the project, but nothing in opposition of the, of the request. So be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Council Schuster?
This is the old pro bill, building, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, a couple of people that weren't here, so I thought I...
Any other questions? Council Stoner?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, thank you, Director Tini. I just have a couple of questions about the process, um, what it would look like basically if the applicant were to go through a conditional use permit, um, versus going through the process with the C2 zone.
Mayor and council, so essentially what you've got is the, the request per the applicant, which is to go to the C2 zoning to allow for the uses, which they believe will be located in probably some of the speculative uses, maybe they've talked to people, who knows, um, to be a permitted use. So once the site is brought into conformance through the site plan process, which is a staff level review, um, it would allow for the interchanging of users to go in and out of the building, uh, with any, without having to come to any additional review body, such as the Planning Commission. If we were to leave it B2 zoning, there would be a segment of those uses, um, they, each time one of those people changed over, they would apply for a conditional use permit. Um, in this case, you would have a fairly unique situation, because often what a conditional use permit does is it looks at a site in total based upon the use request being made. Often it includes, uh, the whole building, the whole site, the whole parking area. In this scenario, what you're gonna be looking at is condoed components of a larger site. When we look at that, we would probably be looking more specifically at the more, let's say, the condoed unit within the larger building versus the site in total. It's unlikely that you would have a use, if it was required to go through the conditional use process, where it would trigger major site changes, that we would see one after the other. So what we would be doing is we'd be going through a procedural process where it would go to the Planning Commission, and they would consider each use on an individual basis through the conditional use process. You would apply for a conditional use, you would make your case as to why that use was appropriate within that zoning district, and then you would be able to be, you would go before the body and either be approved or not, so, and that's really essentially what would happen with each of those uses. For the permitted uses, it would remain the same, in the B2 zoning, they would be allowed to be, to go in and out of there without review by staff unless they were doing building permit changes, like changing electrical, changing lighting, building walls, things like that, and then they would just get a building permit, which would be typical standard process for all, for all types of development like that.
May I have a...
Yes, please.
Um, can you explain to me the general timeframe that you would anticipate from staff perspective, just going through the conditional use process? Basically, how much additional time would be added on to the project?
Mayor and council, so the, the City of Laramie and for conditional use processes, we have all of our timelines available on our website, and so any applicant will be able to go on, find out what two-week process they would follow, and so every two weeks we accept applications, and then basically from the day in which the application starts, the items are routed out to staff members. There's a three-week review process. At the end of that three weeks, if there are no issues, we begin the 15-day notice period, and then it places it on an agenda for the Planning Commission somewhere in that two and a half month-ish period. Some of that's depending upon when they, when the, uh, notice can go out and when the Planning Commission meeting is, because we do have to meet that 15-day notice, and so that's usually, it's pretty typical for a, for a basic conditional use. If there are issues or something like that, which in this case, because we're talking about a multi-tenant building, I, I would see it more as a, after we do one or two, probably pretty routine, but it would still take that timeline to go through that and allow for other departments for their review.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, do you happen to know how many of the vendors would trigger that process? Like, how, how many condos are there, I guess, is my question?
Mayor and council, we don't know at this point, because we haven't gone through the, the full site plan process, which is dividing actually the building up. Also, we don't know what tenants the applicant has proposed, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Uh, Council McKinney?
Yeah. The property to the, to the west, due west of that, um, I know it used to be Wyoming Insulation, I think it's something else now, and then there's, then there's another building, or another two buildings to the west of that. That's all commercial zoned? Or is that retail zoned?
Mayor and council, those are B2 zoning districts.
So those are retail zoned?
Correct.
Okay. Um, uh, nothing else?
Council McKinney?
If we approve the C2 zoning and the property changes hands, what's gonna happen?
Mayor and council, the, the building would be able to be used and other C2 zoning uses.
Stay the same as it is there, it's not gonna change, we won't lose control of what happens on the property?
We would still, you know, depending upon the use change, I mean, we would have, it can trigger improvements, just like any other user going into any type of a building, but it would be, C2 uses would be allowed in that zoning district versus the B2 zoning.
Other questions? Council Polikas?
Yeah, the, I'm, I'm focusing on the whole area, not just this one lot, and, um, I, I know one of the, one of the lots is used by the university, it's a bus storage area. Um, the other properties in the past or presently have been used, not necessarily retail walk-up, they've been used as, as a, so, what I call subcontract-type businesses. One's a garage door company, the service is garage doors, but it's not a walk-up business-type store. So the, the question I'm asking is, do you foresee in the future of just changing that whole, that whole block to the commercial zone versus the, I guess what I'm, I'm looking at saying there really isn't retail businesses in that area, the majority of them are commercial businesses with, with maybe a little bit of a retail flair to them. Do you foresee that whole area being changed and logically being changed to a C2 zone?
Mayor and council, I think, I think what we're gonna see in this, like I said, this kind of, I'm gonna call it the southwest corner of Bill Nye and 15th, is a transition more to the C2 zoning district.
That's my question.
The existing uses that you have there fit a little bit better in the C2 zoning district. We're talking larger, uh, larger metal buildings, they're not...
They're not retail.
...focused on direct retail, so consumer, the consumer isn't necessarily going there. However, they're providing services, they're service-oriented, um, they're giving, you know, they're providing place for someone to, you know, like the garage door guy. Um, I think that, like, like I said, we, we tried to go after getting the university involved, because we think that that would be a good transition for the, the auto dealer as it is now, but future use, if the university does transition that into some sort of bus facility, the C2 zoning is really the appropriate zoning for that and really will match up much better. As you go further down Bill Nye and get closer towards Third Street, I think that's where you're gonna see that transition occur more to retail, because you're gonna be closer to Third Street and closer to interstate access.
Thank you. Thank you.
Council McKinney?
So if we, we pass the C2 zoning here, are we gonna push the others to go to that? Are we gonna let them have their timeframe to get it done?
Mayor and council, the, the city pretty much lets people come in at their, at their leisure as far as requesting a zoning change. If we were to receive another zoning amendment, let's say within the area, we would maybe reach out again to them and say, hey, do you wanna, do you wanna join in and make this a larger process, just like we did with this time? But just like within this scenario, we, we weren't able to do that, and so we don't, you know, we allowed this application to move forward, because we think it is appropriate, so...
And nobody in that area had any objections?
We received no, no objections.
Council Stoner?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, can you help me remember what the buffer area is between the residential and what would become C2?
So, yeah, so if you look at the, the zoning map that we have in your packets, the, I think it's the last page in the, in your packet, so what you do have is you have R1 zoning directly to the east, and it's separated by 15th Street. I mean, that's where your, that's your main break, it's a, it's a large street, and then to the north of that, you have R2 zoning, which is directly north, and then actually the back half technically of that property is B1 zoning to the north. So what you have is you have a hundred-foot right-of-way for Bill Nye Avenue that would go through that area to the north of the building. Um, so the closest stuff to the north would be the R2 zoning, which you would have the hundred-foot distance first and then the R2 zoning, and then behind that's like R1, there's some R2 there, and then that B1 would also be separated by that hundred-foot, uh, right-of-way generally.
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions for you. Can, and this might have been something that was covered on the first reading that I wasn't here for. Do you recall what the Planning Commission members that voted no, what the discussion was, or did they give any reasons?
Yeah, mayor and council, yeah, the, the discussion centered around exactly the same discussion that we're having here tonight, is, which is, is the C2 zoning an appropriate use in this location when you're in proximity of some of these other uses? And I think what the Planning Commission discussed are the same things that are being discussed here. Um, and staff, staff did look at this. I mean, we, we questioned, is this the appropriate transition? The, the key factor for staff in this decision was 15th Street and Bill Nye. We're talking about two of the largest streets in our community, creating essentially a commercial node that is already... node that is already developed commercially in majority of the street frontage in this area. The only stuff that's not developed is right up against the interstate, which is kind of hard to access and would probably mean a maybe expansion of some of these uses maybe in the future, or another road kind of punched off Bill 9 somewhere maybe further to the west. And so that was, that was really a, a deciding factor. Um, I would also say that we did evaluate, is this, is this a B two area? Is this an area where we're going to see general retail growth? And the answer is no. It's too far removed from logical access for where, what retailers are looking for. They're looking for central locations along other business corridors, and that's not what this is. This is kind of a service corridor. And so that's kind of why, that was why we went with that route and why we think that's appropriate change.
So the next question I have is, I know you said that the applicant hasn't really, doesn't identify any tenants.
Just lines up with this.
Yeah, applicants haven't identified any tenants, um, and, but my question is, there's got to be a, a reason for wanting to go to C two. So what uses are they looking to have available specifically that aren't available in the B two that are available in the C two?
Mayor and council, so as, at the first reading, the, the applicant described basically the idea of they're going to condo this building and create a situation that allows for multiple users to use space, indoor space. So think contractors, plumbing companies, maybe like a, a wood shop or something like that. Uses that would allow them to rent large indoor amounts of space out, kind of flex space for these users that are, don't fit within to the retail zoning districts. What you'll find is many of those uses, as member Stoner noted, they would be, they would be required to go through that conditional use process in the B two zoning district, which to them was important to be able to allow them to transition those users in and out of the building a little more readily than telling those users that they would need to go through the conditional use process.
Um, so one of the questions, I know you said 15th provides a pretty big corridor. Was there any conversation at the staff level or at the planning commission about whether we have any other examples in town where we have R one up against C two? I couldn't find any on the.
Yeah, mayor and council, I mean, like, just, I know planning commission didn't discuss that. Um, you know, just kind of, kind of thinking in my, in my mind, I would say, I can't, can't think of any. We have definitely business zoning districts, you know, within, uh, R one zoning districts along Grand Avenue, there's a lot of that. Some of the C two uses that would, I would say, come up against other residential uses are areas along First and Second and Third Street, some of that's zoned commercial, and so you're kind of in that proximity. But then you're also talking about Third Street, it's a pretty heavy res, you know, business corridor too. So it's, uh, you know, one in the same, probably not really.
Was there any discussion of, or concern about, um, so if we change it to C two, you lose that planning commission ability through the conditional use process to put hours of operation for crazy noisy businesses, that kind of stuff? Was there any discussion about the pros and cons about losing the control to do that through the conditional use process rather than transitioning or just changing the zone into C two?
Mayor and council, I think, you know, that that's always, that's always a risk, you know, there's always a risk when you change zoning to a higher intensity that those higher intensity uses can be done. In the C two zoning district and based on this concept here is you've got indoor space, so work is being done indoors. In the C two zoning district, um, the, like, noise, odor, fumes have to stay within the district. So you're fairly, you're pretty limited in terms of what you can do. Um, you know, previously, this operated as a, as a lumberyard and construction yard from, I don't, for, for a long time in this, in this neighborhood. And so, um, I would say that this use might even actually be probably a little bit better longer term for the area versus a, a large use like that, so.
Okay. Um, there was a, one other question, it's specifics, I was just looking at the list of permitted uses in a C two, most of it looks like it wouldn't probably be an issue so close to, to the neighborhood and to the R one housing with a couple exceptions. One of them is a slaughterhouse, packing house, that's a permitted C two use, right? And so if we change it to C two, technically, they could go in and do that, they'd never have to come in front of another burning body, right?
Correct.
Okay, I may need to think about that for a minute. Council Hansen?
Wouldn't we have a similar situation at North Reynolds where the gas station is there? That's fairly close to residential areas right across the street. On the other side, there's commercial. I think that's a, to my mind, fairly close proximity, similarity to this.
Mayor and council, that, the, it's the corner of 15th and Reynolds Street, it's a, it's called neighborhood business. Uh, the neighborhood business zone allows for some uses such as like a gas station to be located. Gas stations would be allowed in the C two zoning district. That's probably your most intense use kind of in that whole block, most of that rest is office. Uh, the neighborhood business zoning district has lots of other limitations that, um, I would say really wouldn't relate to this request based upon the uses that they would like to see, so.
But it butts right next to residential, then, yeah.
Yeah, and, and I would say, I mean, we, we have many uses
Right.
Within the city that butt up against residential zoning districts. It's the zoning component that is what we're talking about today. And I mean, and you, you can have those uses, they can be compatible, um, so.
Could you, um, is there a possibility that the space in general, I know that you're going to subdivide it and do all the administrative stuff that needs to be done with it for the use that the applicant wants to seek, but could they potentially submit a conditional use permit under the B two zoning for a variety of uses to cover like the woodworking shop and the welding shop so they wouldn't have to come back? For, if they have kind of a general idea of this, how the space is going to be used and clientele, could we not do one conditional use permit for all of those uses?
Mayor and council, no. Conditional uses are use-specific for the specific request in which they're being made. To do a general blanket is a, is zoning. That's, so you would want to change your zoning and it would be highly
We don't have that.
I would not support that, that, that idea. It would be a bad idea. Because then what you do is you do open the door up for unlimited future use of anything, which if you want to do that, you change your zoning code.
Got you. Okay. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Tini on this?
I guess I have one more. So, in the development of this neighborhood, and I believe I know the answer to this question, in the development of this neighborhood, which came first, the residential housing or the, uh,
UBC.
The lumberyard?
We are considered first.
Mayor and council, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
I am. I am.
All righty then. Any other questions?
Kind of like the airport, isn't it? If the housing came around it.
All right. Well, let's sit down for a minute. Thanks. Would the applicant like to add anything to the discussion? Hey, is there anybody who would like to make public comment tonight on this item? All right. Discussion from council. Council Stoner?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, last week, I voted no on this, and I wanted to take a second to kind of share where I was coming from with that, especially in light of what Planner Tini just shared. So I think this is a great use, I support the project, um, I want to see it happen. I think infill is great, I want to see more business. Um, I'm a little concerned with the process, and I think that if the applicant can achieve what he wants to achieve with a conditional use permit, um, I would just feel a lot more comfortable with looking at this area at large and not spot zoning something, um, because you can't take that away ever. Once you upzone, it's forever. And bearing in mind that we kind of have or speaking or referring to this larger plan that might be coming down the pipe, I would just feel more comfortable looking at everything at once and thinking about it holistically rather than kind of setting ourselves up by making a spot zone. Especially because they can achieve what they want. I do understand it's going to add about a two and a half months, which I know is not ideal, but I think it, with the proximity to the residential area and so on and so forth, I just think it's a better route that'll achieve the same outcome.
Council Schuster?
Um, I'm really happy to see that this is going to infill. I'm sorry that it takes so long to apply for all these permits, have us sit up here and argue about it, have us, um, gosh, I don't know how to, a word to describe it, how we want to impose our beliefs on it. When it was a lumberyard, it would open at six in the morning before most of the residents got up. The lucky thing about it is the trucks weren't too loud or anything like that, I can't remember a complaint on it. It's kind of like you said, like an airport that builds and then houses build around it. What was there first? And it was UBC back then was the lumberyard, then it went to ProBuild, then they left town and we ended up with a huge empty building. Um, my parents' personal building that I had a small amount of it in there was, um, zoned three different zones inside the building. The lines crossed and little sections were different things before we got it all one zone because we were desperately trying to rent it as an empty building, bringing in absolutely zero revenue for the community. And now it's completely full, it's no longer ours, but it's completely full and bringing in tax dollars and everything else. When this opens up, when he gets people in there and renting, this brings tax dollars into Laramie. And I think it's funny that we're going to try to take it apart. So yes, I'm going to vote yes on this because I, pro-business, I want to see it happen. I don't think, you talked about a slaughterhouse, the odds of that being a slaughterhouse on 25 acres is, is absolutely absurd. I mean, it was in there, but for that to happen, no, it's not going to happen. So I mean, it's just, I, I'm done.
Any other discussion from council?
Yeah, actually, I have. I, I understand the concept of spot zoning and where you're coming from on it. I also understand the concept of having the ability to, to do, um, conditional uses and the advantages of conditional uses. But this area, this neighborhood, and I'm very, very familiar with it because frankly, I was part of the building process and everything that went around it. Not everything that went around it, but a lot of the stuff across the street from it, which was built by Larry Romser. And as was stated, was actually built after this area, had a car dealership, after this area, had a lumberyard, after this area, had a, um, a insulation supply business. It wasn't retail, really. There's frankly, the, other than the car business, the only retail, real retail in that area, excuse me, the only real retail in that area that's ever been there, ever, ever been there is the car business. And that business has found out through the years that it's not, it's a terrible place for a car because it's a terrible retail area, and they've been wanting to move out to, 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 to basically change it. What, and, and I also understand this whole concept of, of, you know, you can't look at something, if you're going to change a zone, you have to assume anything in that zone can happen. But in this case, and, and when I hear this discussion about a slaughterhouse, the problem isn't, isn't the zone in the area, the problem is, is if we have slaughterhouses allowed in the C two zoning, that's something that needs to be changed, and I think it can be changed relatively easily because that's something that might have been workable back in the 1920s or 1930s, but it, it's obviously, nobody is interested in having a slaughterhouse in any part of our community at this point in time. I think that's a fair statement. I also think that everything to the west of this eventually is going to be zoned, realistically, what's in there now is closer to C two zoning than retail, and I really think eventually as people sell their buildings and other uses come about, you're going to see more applications to change to C two zoning. And, and because of that concept, I don't view it as a, as a spot zone, if you will. I mean, come on, the university has a bus barn in there now, it's where they store all their buses. Is that a, is that a beat, is that a use, is that what B one was? That's kind of like the slaughterhouse concept for, for a C two in a way. Uh, it's not a, it's not an appropriate use for a retail area, it's an appropriate use for a C two zone, if you will. So I do appreciate it, and I understand your concern, and, and you're right, a conditional use will work for this particular owner that wants to do that particular thing. But when I look at the big picture of things, that area needs to be and is being used as C two. And therefore, the long conversation is, it makes sense to me at this point in time. Thank you.
Other comments or discussion? So I, I will just add that, um, so Council Polikas is, is right on on my, my concern is that you always have to think about when you, especially when you, uh, enhance the zoning area that, that's permanent. So everything that's on there that's allowed can be allowed. And my, my hesitations are simply, um, putting a C two use up against an R one, I think deserves some careful thought and consideration. That's a very dense housing area down there. And we always catch it later when somebody puts something in there that, that is not compatible with the residential area. So I'm concerned about that. I also agree with Council Polikas on, I think that, uh, we probably need to go through our permitted use list again. Uh, you know, as I'm going through the list for C two, I don't see that many things that I really have an issue with or that I think that it, that would be an issue next up against a neighborhood. It's just a few things, but again, if those are allowed, they're allowed. And I think that's something that we have to take into consideration. I also think that we should probably think long-term in terms of how space is going and how business is changing. The idea of multi-use space is becoming very common, where whether it's a co-working space in downtown where literally dozens and dozens of people are sharing the same desk and computers, working different hours for different reasons. I think the idea of the kind of similar thing at a, at a light manufacturing or construction level is a great idea, I do support the project. But I think the fact that we don't have a ability in place to let them go through a conditional use permit process to approve a few uses at one time, that just boggles my brain. I, that just seems unnecessarily bureaucratic to say we can't do it for, because it might be more than one thing. I think that an applicant should be able to come forward, give a little bit more protection to the neighborhood by leaving it B two. Applicants should be able to come forward and say, okay, woodworking, welding, you know, all the things that they're permitted as the building owner that they would consider acceptable for a lease, let's put it on a conditional use permit application and let it go through. I think that that's something that the city should seriously look at. I think we're kicking ourselves in the foot here and, or just, I don't know, this is frustrating because I do want to see the project through, but at the same time, I think we need to be cognizant about putting that, those potential uses that may be far off, they may never happen. I don't think anybody wants a slaughterhouse up against their residential neighborhood, but we all know that it's allowed if you change it to that zone, so. Any other discussion? City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Schuster?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
McKinnney?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Stoner?
No.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
No.
That's seven yeses and two noes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. So move on to third reading. All right, it is 7:40, why don't we take about a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back and finish the rest of the agenda. So let's go on to item number 12. Council McKinnney?
I move to approve original ordinance number 1991 as recommended by the planning commission on second reading in accordance with findings of fact and conclusion of law and note a public hearing was held on November 20th, 2018.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Schuster. Okay, Mr. Dean?
Mayor and council, thanks. Good evening again. This is the second reading of both building and fire code changes to 1524. Uh, very briefly, just for those members that were not here at that meeting as well, essentially these changes allow and give the ability for both, uh, fire prevention and, and building department to provide essentially citations for those people that do not get licenses or do not pull permits for work that's required. It also provides the ability for when we note, um, life safety, health issues for those citations to be given. The section is, comes out of 1524, the majority of the, of the, the changes come at the very beginning of 1524.
The majority of the, of the, the changes come at the very beginning of 1524 where there's a purpose statement, the, the authority which is given through Wyoming State Statute is referenced within the document. There is a very brief table of the different offenses, first, second, and third offense and the valuation of those fines associated with each of those, as well as a general citation for life safety issues and other violations within the chapter. The next section really talks about changes for requirements for permits and licenses. Permits are the things that you need to do a project. Licenses are those things if you're, for instance, an electrical contractor that you need to have to do the work properly. You then have other sections within here that remove some repetitive language by the addition of the stuff that we put at the very beginning of the chapter, such as other fine references, some other sections, as well as referencing proper terminology like Building and Fire Code Board of Appeals, for instance. One item of note, you should have provided a memo, it's on the Agenda Center as well as you've been provided a hard copy. Myself and the city attorney were reviewing this item between first and second reading and we felt that the language found in those sections that were mentioned during pre-meeting, which is 1524, triple zero, D2, and E2 sections, would need to include, or we would like to have the words included, "or entities whose agents." What that does is that provides city and staff the ability to go after the, the all-encompassing, whether it's a person, an entity, or the agency in which maybe a company that is applying for these licenses or permits. And then also, we believe a removal of a comma is important and proper, the proper wording so that we don't run into any legal matters later down the road. And so what I've provided you is an amendment motion if you feel that that's an appropriate amendment to make your life a little bit easier, hopefully. So I'd be happy to answer any questions in terms of the codes. We do have also the code administration staff member as well as fire prevention staff member here. If you have any questions for them, they are both helped in drafting this so that we got to a point which was helpful for them as well as for all of us as we go through this process, so I'll leave it at that.
Any questions for Mr. Tini? Does anybody have any questions for building code or fire marshal? I see no questions for staff. All right. Any comments from the public on this item? Okay, come back to Council. I would look for somebody to move our amendment if they felt it was okay to remove the comma. Counselor Gabriel?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to amend original ordinance 1991, sections 15.24.0, D2, and 15.24.0, E2, to include the words "or entities whose agents" after the fourth in each paragraph and remove the comma after the word begin in sections that I mentioned previous.
Counselor Gabriel, actually, those are different sections.
They are.
They're D2 and E1. Here.
Oh, yes, they are. I'm, okay. So I would remove the comma after the word begin in sections 15.24.0, D1, 15.24.0, E1.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor. All right. Is there any questions on this amendment from Council members? Is there any public comment on this amendment? Okay, seeing none. Any discussion from the Council on this amendment? City Clerk, can you do roll call on the amendment, please?
Gabriel?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries, so that is now incorporated into the document and the comma is gone. All right. Going back to the main motion, any, any discussion further on this? Okay, seeing none. City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Stoner?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Are there any issues from staff if we put this on the consent agenda for third reading? We all good? Everybody good? Okay, it'll be on the consent agenda. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, item number 13, Counsel Schuster?
Thank you very much. The title of this original ordinance of number 1992, amending Title V of the Laramie Municipal Code, 5.09.140 alcohol, alcohol beverage fees to add a provision for alcohol permit refunds. I move to approve original ordinance number 1992, amending Title V of the Laramie Municipal Code, 5.09.140 dash alcoholic beverage fees to add a provisional for alcohol permit refunds on first reading and set a public hearing for December 4th, 2018. For some reason, my brain, it was second reading, it's not its first.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Stoner. Um, City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight, we have an amendment to our section on alcoholic beverages to allow for us to be able to make refunds on application fees for alcohol catering and malt beverage permits that have been made before issuance of the permits at the discretion of the city manager or designee. We have since our work session changed the wording in the, in the original ordinance to kind of make it a little bit more clear as requested in the work session. This refund policy that was attached to it would allow us to go ahead and refund application fees for alcohol permits minus a $25 administrative fee. We've requested a $25 administrative fee because as the application comes into the office, we do have staff time for reviewing those applications. We don't have very many applications that come in that are denied, but we do have, with this, it would provide a little bit of guidance for staff to move forward. You know, the, previously, we didn't have a provision in code to allow us to do a refund, so this would establish a way for us to be able to refund upon a denial and how that would look, you know? So there would, there is a form that they would fill out and submit to the office, and then at that time, we could go ahead and review the, the submission and issue a check for refund. We haven't put in a provision for credit card refunds because it becomes a bigger issue with the third-party provider, so it would be by check.
All right, questions for the City Clerk? Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would suggest one minor editorial addition, and that is in the red section there that was added, in the long line, may be made only before issuance because then it makes it clear that it has to be before the issuance, okay? Only before the issuance. With the previous paragraph, it says, "No refunds may be made, da-di-da-di-da," and then, "only if such-and-such." I think it would make it a little clearer. Just a suggestion.
Thank you, Counselor Hanson. The attorney did review this. I don't know, Bob, if you...
Mayor, Counselor Hanson, I think it's, can't hurt to put that there, but I don't think it changes anything. And we're happy to bring that.
All right, may be made only before...
Amendment for second reading or...
Yeah. That's why I'm saying that. Yeah.
So Counselor Hanson, we would need an amendment, I think, to add that word in if you want to...
It's so minor, you know, I just thought for clarity's sake, because of that previous paragraph which says, "No refunds will be made," but there's one exception, "only if it hadn't been issued yet."
City Attorney?
Mayor, the, the previous sentence says, "You can't make refunds after they've been issued."
Correct.
The, the proposal for you is to say, when, what we can refund before issuance of certain permits.
Okay, right, thank you. City Clerk?
So Mayor, that's one thing I failed to mention is that per state statute, we can't issue a refund after issuance. So in the refund policy that we've provided, there is a provision for a transfer, a one-time transfer for the same event, same location, just to a different day. So if they got rained out, you know, they could go ahead and transfer it to another day.
Okay. Any other questions for the City Clerk?
My heart is not whetted to this, Your Honor.
Are you okay?
Just thought it would be clearer yet.
All right. Any other questions for the City Clerk on this, or the City Attorney? All right, thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. Any Council discussion on this item? Counselor Schuster?
I'm the one that pushed for this and it happened to a, an event during Jubilee days. And they came in late with their request and it made it through a couple of the different organizations at the city. And then an organization said, "Well, we don't like it that it's gonna happen during Jubilee days, we can't provide enough security." So they denied it then. And that, that's the only reason I wanted this in here, is for one that's issued and said, "Go ahead, have this, no, there's gonna be no refunds." I love it that you say if they get rained out, they can move it to a different night, but I only requested this because if they applied for it, and they didn't apply in enough time, if, if maybe they had applied earlier and some things could have been worked out, they could have had it during Jubilee days, but it didn't happen. So if, if something happens where we say, "I'm sorry, you've applied for this, you've paid your money, but we're gonna tell you no, but we're gonna keep everything," I didn't think that was very fair. So that, that's why I pushed for this. So I, I like the way it's written, I like everything on it, I realize there's a $25 administration fee, that's great. I mean, that, that, that works, but I'm glad to see this moving forward and it's, it's for some people I know, I have no money-making with this or anything else, so it's not tied to me in any way, shape, or form, but I, they kind of said something to me and I said, "I'll bring it forward."
Any other discussion or comments from Council? City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Hanson?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. All right, on to item number 14, public comments on non-agenda items. Do we have anybody that wants to make public comment tonight? Seeing none, move on to item number 15, consideration of future Council work session topics. Does anybody have any requests? Okay, seeing none, move on to item number 16, Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Council adjourn to executive session regarding personnel according to Wyoming Statute Paragraph 16 dash 4 dash 405A, Roman numeral 10.
Do we have a second?